And I'm going, well, let's let you know, I take, I take pictures weekly and see how things are doing. I pulled it up and showed you. And they're like, I said, right, missing, missing, missing.
Excuse me.
Who was that?
I don't know who's up. I don't know who.
Yeah.
Well, glad you got some rest. It doesn't hurt to bring it all back.
No, I know what you meant, nothing. And then for the electrical. When couple voltage, put them together at this place, everything is different. Besides, I just got to replace it. Yesterday.
Actually, receipts might come in handy.
Okay, we'll call the City of Kiwanee Common Council meeting for June ninth, twenty twenty five to order. Uh, let the record show all members are present. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Yeah, item three, approval of May twelfth, twenty twenty five, regular common council and May nineteenth, twenty twenty five, special common council minutes. You retain a motion to approve or any corrections noted?
I'll say that.
Discussion. Was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public comment communications, three minute time limit per person. Is there anyone that wishes to speak under public comment this evening? Please come up, state your name and address.
All right. I'm not doing this as Erin Miller, the clerk for Kiwanee. I am doing this on behalf of a letter that was submitted. Um, and has to be read under public comment for hopefully for a future agenda item. Um, and it's from Carol Linus minus. Um, City of Kiwanee Common Council, request for a disabled parking stall. Dear council members, my name is Carol Linus. And I am the current president of the Kiwanee Artisan Center. The Kiwanee Artisan Center is located at four oh one A Harrison Street, Kiwanee. This is located on the front side of the Masteler Building. For those of you who may not be familiar with the Artisan Center, we are a not-for-profit organization that offers instructional classes in, but not limited to. Quilting, sewing, cooking, painting, and other crafting projects. We offer classes on an approximate quarterly schedule, trying each quarter to offer a variety of classes that the community may find of interest. Each quarter, we have anywhere from eighty to a hundred and ten participants who sign up for our classes. Most of these classes are offered right at the Artisan Center. Our most popular and most heavily attended classes are our quilting classes. Each quarter, we have approximately sixty quilters register for these classes. These construction classes meet weekly for a six-week period. As you might imagine, the age of many of our participants that attend these classes fall within the senior citizen category. Many of them experience mobility issues and the Masteler family has accommodated our group by installing a ramp at our entrance. However, parking is limited in this area and parking near or close to the building is a commodity. Therefore, we are requesting that the city designate a parking stall for disabled parking only. This may most conveniently be located at the corner, corner of Harrison and Dodge, closest location to the ramp on the building. We appreciate your consideration of our request. Carol can be reached at nine two zero three six zero three five one three with any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak under public comment this evening? Does anyone like to speak under public comment? Hearing non-public comment is closed. Item five, boards, commissions, committee agendas, reports, and staff reports. I would entertain a motion to accept and place on file. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item six, manor's report, six A. Approve reappointment of Verdell McPain and Abby Schaller to the Public Library Board for three-year terms expiring June thirty, twenty twenty eight. I would entertain a motion to approve those appointments.
I'll make that motion.
Appointments. Is there a second?
Second.
Joe? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I would like to also, uh, mention, uh, Scott and Teresa Bordalini were the twenty twenty five Rotary Honorees this year. And they've got a long list of accolades of community service and helping with, uh, coaching and athletics. Uh, I was honored to present them with a key to the city. And so if you see them, uh, around town, to give them a big congratulations. We're very fortunate to have the many people that we do giving in so many ways in the city and the communities around us and, uh, shouldn't be taken for granted, so. Shout out to them. Item seven, business agenda, seven, eight. Fiscal year twenty twenty four financial audit presentation, Justin Hogland, Baker Tilly. Welcome, Justin.
Thanks for having me. Um, for you though, uh, please, if you don't know me, I'm Justin Hogland, principal, technically, um, and I work on your financial audit. And, um, so we did issue your twenty twenty four reports back on June sixth. Um, and so then we always like to kind of come briefly go over the reports, some of the financial highlights for the year. Um, and see if you have any questions for, for me. Um, so feel free to stop me too at any point. If you do have questions, you don't have to wait till the end. Um, but so the first document I want to talk about looks like this, is the reporting and insights from the twenty twenty four audit. I believe everyone should have an electronic copy. Paper copies were mailed out today, so you will get a paper copy as well. Um, but this document has a ton of different information in it. Um, a lot of required communication that we need to give those charged with governance, the council. Um, so briefly, just kind of wanted to go through some of the highlights of this document. Um, if you have it, you at least have it up. Um, you know, so like, for example, this has stuff like on page three, it lists out what our responsibilities are. Um, as your auditor. Um, you know, page six kind of goes through any internal control deficiencies that, that we found throughout your audit. Um, you know, small place like this is always, are usually going to have some significant duties issues. Um, so page six kind of lists and page seven kind of lists out those that have kind of been here for, for a while now. Um, a lot of those, it's very hard to kind of get them to go away, just with only having a couple of people. Um, but there's some of those that can certainly, you can certainly put, you know, new processes and procedures in place to, to knock a couple of the, um, easier ones out. Um, but again, a lot of them are very similar to prior years. Um. Page eight, we have a list of some other comments and recommendations for you. Um, you know, we kind of go over some of the water and sewer financial highlights. Um, you know, one item that I like to point out each year is there's a paragraph related to the water loss. Um, so historically, there's been a very high volume of water loss, meaning the water that's gone through your treatment facility. Compared to what's actually been built. And so. The highest loss that we've kind of seen over the last seven or so years was there was actually a forty-five percent water loss at one point. Um, this year it's, it's only twenty-three percent, so it has kind of gone down from, you know, maybe the more of the historical average over the years. Um, you know, I know Nathan and Tony have been working to try to, you know, get that number down. It's kind of hard to.
So what I want to add to that, we, uh, all know this year. Do some research that when that transition from Banning to Workhorse happened, they never inputted the high-flow meters at several. Consumers, so that was one of the contributing factors of why Tony and myself couldn't figure out on our end what's going on. So those have been since taken care of, so now that water is actually being recorded. So that was probably why we had such a high water loss.
Okay.
Last year, we're working through that issue, so I just wanted to bring that to light, that we're, worked through that.
Yes, because D and R reporting must have been. A challenge, to say the least.
Well, going through the numbers that he was setting back to me that was coming from the Workhorse program, I didn't make any sense to him.
Sure.
We actually went down and water pumped it, but our water loss went through the roof. I'm like, there's something wrong, we figured it out.
Okay.
Yeah, so also you see a drop down for next year, that'll go down, because again, normally like. The kind of industry average is closer to ten percent or so. So hopefully we're getting close then down to that range for next year. Um. See, well, something here, so like looking at page fourteen. Um, this is a big one that I like to bring up to the council every year. We do actually have, um. You know, a resource page or website for those charged with governance. There's a link on page fourteen that you can click on, um, to go to that Baker Tilly website. And it kind of goes over any, you know, trending topics or regulatory notes that you should be aware of, or that's kind of happening in the governmental sphere. Um, there's three big ones that I kind of wanted to bring up here. Uh, on that page versus the funding evaluation and, and pursuit as far as, you know, just making you aware, there are obviously grants out there. Kiwanee is actually very good at obtaining grants, you know, you have the CDBG grant on the Fisherman's Point. You've had a couple, you know, million-plus-dollar grants related to other harbor and the two projects. So the, the city really, at least per capita, is above average as far as the grants that you pull in, which is really good to see. Um, but always, you know, being aware of the types of money that's out there, um, that can help you on your projects. A lot of it's not free, right? A lot of it has a fifty-fifty match or something like that. Um, but if you're going to do the project, always looking to see if there's, there's money out there. Um, you know, with the current administration, we don't know kind of what's going to happen as far as. Likely, there'll be a reduction in the amount of funds available for, for state and local governments, but again, we, we, we don't know yet. Um, digital transformation is the other thing. Obviously, we live in a digital environment that's becoming increasingly, you know, paperless. So just always thinking about what are ways that, uh, can we like streamline inefficient processes, you know, have online bill paying? You know, have everything in the cloud, stuff like that, always something to consider. Um, the last one, cybersecurity, you know, making sure you have an insurance policy in place for that, controls in place for that. We've had multiple clients this year that have had their data hacked and helped ransom. It's, it's real, it happens, and these aren't huge municipalities, so it happens.
We're actually, uh, the county, who is our IT resource, um, we're going with a whole new firewall protection and all that sort of thing. And so that'll be coming implemented soon.
Awesome, no, that's great.
As we know, you're never too big to get hacked.
You aren't, no, I was one place, you're small. Thinking on this place, you know, bigger, bigger ones out there, but it does happen. Um, so a lot of kind of the big, three big trends that we're seeing, um, a lot of movement and, you know, if you ever want to kind of talk about these in more detail. There's people that basically got specialized in each one of these. Free conversation, if you ever want us to connect you with someone, just to, I'm sure, what more could we do? Um, well, we're certainly available for that, so. Um. See, a couple others, a couple other points on here, you know, page twenty-two has my contact information. You ever need to get ahold of me, email, phone, throughout the years, please do so. Um. Page twenty-five then is going to list out all material, um, entries that we had as part of the audit. So we are required to show you all, all material audit entries that we had, right? Things that we had to fix, um, to make your statements materially correct. Um, so again, these are just the material ones. So we did have, I think it was forty-nine total audit entries this year, things that we came in and fixed that. I would say is a little bit higher than, than the average. I know I sent Heath even a list of the last decade, it's, it's always been like, I think it was like probably between like thirty.
Around thirty, thirty-nine over the last fourteen years.
Might be like the average, um, the last couple of years have been a little bit above, above that average. So we do provide a lot of bookkeeping, um. To the city, I would say on average, for municipality, it's probably closer to fifteen, maybe twenty. Um, audit entries that we have each year. Um, for the rest, it's just again, some more required communication that we usually give those charged with governance. That's this document. Um, next, the financial statements themselves. Um, you know, the, the big one that I like to point out is it's Roman numerals. One through three is our opinion on your financial statements. So we do give what's unmodified or a clean opinion on a portion of your financial statements. We do then give you a, what's called a qualified opinion on a portion of your statements. And that's, we've done that for the last five or six years, ever since Gatsby seventy-five came out, which related to other post-employment benefits. Um, and so essentially. Because the city allows your retirees to stay on your, uh, insurance once they retire. There's what's called an implicit rate from that. So essentially, you're paying a higher rate because you're allowing them to stay on. And Gatsby seventy-five auditing standards say that because of that, there's actual liability that needs to be calculated. So you'd have to have an actuary. Do an actuarial study to determine what that liability is to remove this qualified opinion. Cause we just can't, we don't know what it is, if it's, it's very, very likely immaterial. We have a lot of clients that did this and had the study done. Um, you know, five, six years ago, and it was immaterial, and we would assume it would be immaterial to Kiwanee. But again, you can't say anything because there's no study that was, that was done. So if you ever want to get rid of that qualified opinion on a portion of your financial statements, you could always have, um, an actuary perform that study. Given your size, there's usually kind of like a smaller study that can be done for, versus a full-scale one, because you have under, it's like a hundred employees, so. Um, just something to consider. Um, so next, I want to go through kind of the financial highlights document, right? It's going to have all the, the fund graphs and stuff in it. Um. So looking at page one, it should look like this, with the, the bar chart at the top. You know, what I always say is, I always like to look at the general fund and your fund balance or equity that's kind of built up. Um, when kind of assessing the financial health of municipality, because this is your main operating fund, where a lot of the day-to-day transactions run through. And so this kind of bar chart at the top is comparing your level of fund balance in twenty twenty-three versus twenty twenty-four. Um, you will see that your fund balance is broken down into three different buckets. Um, at the bottom here, you have about seventy-two thousand in non-spendable fund balance. So it's considered non-spendable because it's not in spendable form. So a chunk of that is like delinquent special assessments. You're, you're likely not going to collect those within a year, hence it's not in expendable form, and it's a non-spendable. Um, another chunk of it relates to prepaid's. Um, above that, you have your assigned fund balance, so that's two hundred and sixty-two thousand of assigned fund balance. So the city council can assign funds for various, you know, capital projects and stuff like that in the future. Um, so that's what a lot of people use the assigned fund balance for. The biggest, a huge portion of this two hundred and sixty-two thousand are amounts that are assigned for your twenty twenty-five budget. So once a municipality has budgeted more expenditures and revenues, you're kind of saying, oh, I'm going to use up some of my fund balance next year. We then need to show it as being assigned, since you're kind of budgeting to use it up. So it was like two hundred and something thousand in your general fund, uh, where your expenses were higher than your budgeted revenues. So that's why that went up, you know, about two hundred thousand from, from the last year. Um, and then above that, that's what's left over, right? It's your unassigned fund balance, doesn't have any restrictions or anything attached to it. And you'll see that took a pretty giant leap last year, so going from about one hundred thousand to six seventy-five. Um, so that's great to see. Um, I will say, page thirty-seven on the financials does break down these fund balances in, in more detail, if you want to look at that. But related to that big increase in unassigned fund balance, in the middle of this page, we have the summarized income statement. So again, this is a very high-level budget to actual of your general fund during the year. Um, so you'll see that you budgeted to essentially use up two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars of your fund balance. However, you actually had a net income of four hundred and forty-five thousand, so way better than, than budget for the general fund. Um, and that's both from a revenue and expenditure standpoint. So your revenues were about three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars better than budget. Um, a lot of this relates to, you know, you had some insurance recoveries that were not, revenues that were not obviously budgeted for. Investment income was a lot higher than budget. Again, we, we live in a pretty high interest rate environment. Most municipalities are seeing, you know, an increase in general fund revenue because, you know, those CDs are five percent versus point two-five percent. Um, and stuff like that. The other huge part of it, about a hundred and forty-five thousand of that, is because your TIF district number two closed during the year. And so when it closed, it had excess fund balance. And so when a TIF closes with excess fund balance, a portion of that stays with the city, and a portion of it goes to the overlying taxing jurisdictions. So essentially, you had kind of this, you know, what I would call like a one-time infusion of cash in the general fund of about a hundred and forty-five thousand again. So that's kind of a one-time thing, not something that you're going to have every year, or I guess until your TIF three closes. Um. Your expenditures, again, were much better than budget. The biggest piece of that was the police being under, under budget. It was, it was well over a hundred thousand, um, as far as expenditures. So pages forty-five through forty-eight, kind of the financials do break this down to a much more line-by-line item, and kind of showing the variances. But overall, a very good year for, for the general fund. Um, went on to the next page. Again, this focuses around the general fund, fund balance. And one, um, kind of ratio we like to calculate is we take that unrestricted fund balance that we just talked about. Dividing it by your expenditures for the general fund. And this is essentially saying is, you know, how long can you keep the lights on with just that fund balance that you've built up? If you don't take in any more revenues. Uh, so Kiwanee is the orange line here. You can see that calculates to about twenty-six percent in twenty twenty-four, or three months of, of kind of reserve sitting there. Um, you know, we always like to see at least two months, so you're above that. Um, the blue dots are other municipalities your size, again, you're a little bit under that. But you can see here, the last four years listed, it keeps going up. And I think, you know, for you on the council, John, others that have been here for a long time, that's been at least six or seven years that it's gone up every year now in a row. Um, so it used to be a lot lower than negative one point one there that you see in twenty twenty. So the city has really done a good job in slowly building up that fund balance in the general fund. Yeah, it took a big leap this year. But be careful, because a lot of some of a hundred and forty-five thousand of that related to that TIF two, kind of one-time infusion of cash. But again, still would have had a positive net income.
Yeah, that's where I always thought of those insurance recoveries are not inaccurate. You know, depiction of what your revenue or your expenses are. I mean, it is, if you offset it by the expense, uh, by an expense, but if you don't offset it by that expense. Your revenue can look way better than it actually was.
I definitely, because if you have insurance recovery, you're probably going to have an expense on the other side.
Exactly.
It's like Corona.
Fixing it, right?
There's, there's a lot of money other municipalities were living on and budgeted on and hired upon. And now they're in a world of hurt because that money's no longer there. If you're a large community, there's a lot, millions of dollars.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so I'm down over ten million that we audit, so it's, you know, it's a crazy amount, and I was, you know, that's a great point, I was going to bring that up at the end too. So there have been a lot of kind of one-time things that might have helped us along the way. But again, even factoring out those insurance recoveries, the TIF, you still would have actually had a net, net income. So again, it's good to see that you still would have been okay. Yep, yep. But again, a great job for the city to kind of help build that up. It's not easy, right? In, in a government to build up revenue, you have very limited revenue sources, and you have expenses that you're going to, you know, you're going to have. So, um, it's hard to get out of that hole, but the city certainly has done a very nice job of it. Um, so going on to the next page. Um, another area we like to look at is the city's debt and where you're at with that. Um, so here at the top, we're kind of showing this black line. This is your statutory debt limit, this is five percent of equalized values, how much general obligation debt you can take out. Um, so that's that black line there. Um, the orange kind of line is your actual general obligation debt outstanding. You can see it stayed pretty consistent throughout the last five years. Um, so essentially, you've used up about thirty percent of your debt limit as of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. I know you did take out a three-point-five million in twenty twenty-five, so that's going to, you know, bump up. Twenty percent or so next year, you're going to see a, a big bump of that because of that debt that was taken out. Um, but again, thirty, I would say is around the average, if not below the average, um, as far as. The debt that you used up, the debt capacity you used up. So, um, you certainly have, or in a, in a position to borrow if, if need be, and like, like you did. So there's, there's, there's no issues with being around that fifty percent or so. Um, the next page, again, focuses around your debt. And we always like to see, you know, of your total expenditures, your recur, your kind of recurring expenditures, how much do you have to devote to pay off that debt that you have? Right, because if you're not, you know, if you're using it to pay debt, you can't use it for something else, right? Um, and so you'll see, again, in orange, is the City of Kiwanee. You used about nine point seven percent of your expenditures related to paying off your debt service. Um, other municipalities are the black dots your size in Wisconsin. So the last couple of years, you have been below, um, other municipalities as far as how much you need to devote to your debt service. Again, you'll likely see a spike now with the big debt issuance happening in twenty twenty-five, where you'll probably be up closer to the average, if not a little bit above. Um, but again, a totally healthy debt position right now. Um, so next, we're just going to go on to the utilities. Um, the first is the water utility, and this is on the next page. Um, you know, at the top, we have kind of your, comparing your operating revenue compared to your operating expenses. Revenue in orange, expenses in black. Um. You will see that the revenues did go up. Um, you did have a rate increase, I think it was like mid-twenty twenty-three that really helped kind of drive that increase in revenue. Um. I will gavvy at it with, you know, this is just showing your operating revenues and operating expenses. There are some non-operating expenses that you have in your financial statements. The biggest one would be your interest expense on your debt, that's considered a non-operating expense. So when you're calculating that income, you need to cut, factor all those in, and even if you calculate that in there, you still had a net income of about eighty-eight thousand. And, and the water utility, which is, which is great to see. Again, some of the general fund, the, the water utility also rebounded again. Those new rates in twenty twenty-three certainly helped that, helped that happen. Um, below that, we always like to calculate kind of what your unrestricted reserves are, and then your kind of months of cash on hand. You'll see that that was thirteen point four eight months of cash on hand, um, at the end of the year. In the water utility, that's really good, really strong position. We always like to see at least three months, so you're, you're well above that. Um. Below that, we have your debt coverage, so you have some debt in the water utility, that says you have to have a debt coverage ratio of one point two five. Essentially, in the financials, you can kind of see how it's all calculated, but essentially saying, we want to make sure you're having enough net income to cover one point two five of your next debt payment, right? You're going to have the cash coming in to pay that next debt, that's what the holders of your debt want to see. Uh, so you have to be above one point two five, you're actually at two point four five. So again, you're above your debt coverage minimum, as you have been, um, for a long time. Below that is an investment in capital calculation. So again, the water and the sewer utility is very capital-intensive funds, right? Wastewater treatment plant, all the pipes, heaters, et cetera. Um, so we always like to see of that capital that you have, those capital assets, how much is still kind of. Backed by debt and how much is kind of fully owned by the city. Um, so for the water utility, about ninety-nine percent of that is actually backed by debt still, or has debt that needs to be repaid on that. And kind of why that's so high is, you know, you buy a wastewater treatment plant, how about that? Um, and it's going to depreciate in value. And so that depreciation is kind of keeping up with the debt you took out. And the debt's going down, but the depreciation, the actual value of that asset's going down as well. And so that's why this has kind of stayed around at ninety-nine percent. We usually like to see for an industry average that it's at least fifty percent equity. So this is a pretty high amount, but it all depends on how old the systems are and stuff like that. Um, so.
Calculated by, um. What you think the age of the facility will be?
Yeah, there's a useful life saying, you know, whatever.
I think Kiwanee, I think Kiwanee was at forty years, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, it depends.
Forty year on it, so.
Yeah.
Was it for Nathan?
The wastewater is forty.
The wastewater, that's the calculation for the water plant. Okay, yeah, wastewater, I think it was forty percent.
We're beyond that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. So that's the water utility. The next page would be the sewer utility. Um. And again, similar to the water utility, I would say it kind of had a more of a breakout year. Um, there were new rates when you affect, I think it was January first, twenty twenty-four. So you can kind of see how, you know, the revenues bounced back up there. Um, so again, similar to the water utility, you had a net income of about seventy-two thousand in the sewer utility, which, which is great to see. Um. Your unrestricted reserves for months, again, that's above kind of that minimum we like to see of three. Um, and you definitely meet your debt coverage ratio, that two-point-six compared to the one-point-one. Um, if your investment in capital, again, is much closer to kind of what we would, what we would see a lot of places where it's at least fifty-fifty kind of equity versus, versus debt. Um, so again, you know, overall, the city really did have a, a good year financially in, in your general fund and utilities specifically. Um, but like was brought up with, with ARPA funds, with the insurance recoveries, there's a lot of kind of one-time kind of boosts to that. That now the city's not going to be able to rely on. I know you did have some ARPA funds left for twenty twenty-five, or, um, it sounds like almost all spent at this point, so that, that's kind of running out. Um, so cer- certainly want to be kind of fiscally aware of that running out and what the implications of that could be, so.
Well, we used, we dedicated all the ARPA expenses.
Well, we used, we dedicated all the ARPA expenses to basically one-time capital things that. We're just kind of hanging out there, like the doors, for example.
I did see the new ones.
Yeah, so we use ARPA for basically those kinds of things rather than using them as an.
Use it on salaries and stuff like that, and, you know.
That was definitely the way to go.
Oh, yeah.
You have questions or?
Any questions for Justin?
Justin, how long has Baker Tilly been the E D S auditor?
That's a great question. I've been here twelve years. At Baker Tilly and, and I've been on this engagement.
I think all the while when I was the mayor, so.
Yeah.
Be close, so.
Yeah, so.
It's back to two thousand seven, I think, or something, yeah.
Yeah, so before that, I, I don't know how long. It's probably been. A while since then.
How does this audit compare to previous ones you've done?
As far as.
Challenging, uh. Problems, uh, better audit than others, uh, you know, unbalanced. How, how does it look?
It was, it was challenging. Obviously, there's turnover, right?
Yeah.
So there's people, when we got here with, uh, with, with Kim. Um, and Amber that. It just started, they didn't know what was going on. You know, didn't know where to find stuff necessarily. So that was challenging. Um, so you know, any historical questions, we had to go to Heath because he would, he was here during that. And it was kind of hard to kind of find stuff and we asked him to try to retrain kind of like, here's what we're looking for. Here's kind of what we need you to prepare. So that obviously takes more time when you, you have people that haven't been through an audit before. But there also has been turnover, unfortunately. The last five or so years, and, and the kind of the main people that we work with, right, in accounting and, and finance department, so. We're kind of used to that, but I obviously that makes it not as smooth as if, if you're working with someone that's been there for twenty years, knows what you're kind of looking for. Knows what questions you're gonna ask. So from that standpoint, obviously a little bit more, more of a, of a struggle.
Last question. Are there, um. Policies that we need to adopt as a council that will help like. Create more standard operating procedures? So should there be turnover that there are? Um, we have processes in place that we follow from employee to employee.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be awesome. Um, I, I hear that all the time, like, hey, it would be great to have this in place of someone. You know, everyone's, that term gets hit by a bus or something. There would be kind of this flow chart of, hey, here's what we're supposed to do. Here's where everything is. But there's so much to do when you're running a government that that just gets a lot of times pushed to the side and just doesn't. Happen unfortunately in a lot of places unless you're a, a really like a, a bigger municipality that has. The people need to vote someone to this, hey, let's write all these procedures down, get them all documented. So it just doesn't have it up really that often at smaller municipalities.
But are there like one or two we should have in place that we don't have?
That can certainly give you a link to, that the leaders and, and the Wisconsin G F O A have. Example policies. If you're talking about like debt management policy or investment policy or fund balance policy. Um, we can certainly give some examples of what those look like. But you know, as far as like an investment policy, the city doesn't invest in any crazy securities, right? You can't invest in an apple, but you can invest in a lot of other, you know, you know, treasuries and stuff like that, but. So you don't really probably need the investment policy if you're not gonna kind of go that route as far as how much interest rate risk and stuff you wanna take on. You know, again, fund balance policy, I feel like maybe we've talked about fund balance policy before here. Um, a lot of places have like, hey, we want to keep that general fund between twenty to twenty-five percent. Of general fund expenses, you know, we kind of calculated you're at twenty-six percent. Um, so some places have a fund balance policy, but. I can certainly, I'll, I'll send a link to Heath for some different policies that are in place. Like, some places have a debt management policy. Um, not very common, but they'll say, you know, we're not gonna use five percent of your statutory debt limit. We're gonna cut that back to four percent. We're not gonna go over four percent. And so they have a formal policy like that, but. That's more kind of founding policies versus maybe procedures type, type documentation. Okay. Good questions.
Anyone else? Scott?
Yeah, yeah, page eight of the summary, you noted that not all of our funds. Had annual budgets developed for them. Did we get a list of which budgets are missing?
It's, it's in the financials.
Okay.
Um, there's a list saying this, these were not budgeted for.
Excellent.
X, Y, and Z's.
Okay. All those we got them. We can tackle that.
Yeah, so making sure, you know, they obviously have to have a budget for, well, the state statute say you have to have a budget for all, all funds, so making sure that's. That's done and, um, you know, a lot of places will. So you usually do a balanced budget. If that's not always possible, but at least they'll have like a line in their, in their revenues that say use of fund balance to kind of budget. And that's again, would be assigned in our financials for your next year. But I'll, I'll get a lit, I'll tell again, tell Heath what page that's on the financials.
Any other questions for Justin? All right, well, appreciate it, Justin.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, then I would entertain a motion to accept the twenty twenty-four financial audit and place on file. Uh, any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Seven B, adopt resolution number two zero two five dash two zero five three. Amending resolution number two zero two four dash two zero four nine. To reduce the twenty twenty-five general fund budget to maintain compliance with the state expenditure restraint program.
And attached is the proposed budget amendment. Staff review indicated that this is required in order to comply with the state expenditure restraint program. Which limits the expansion of municipal budgets by about three and a half percent year over year. Now, without the amendment, the city could lose out on stating a form of about forty to fifty thousand dollars for next year. Our review indicated that actually this isn't because of actual budgets as reported in the city accounting system, but rather in the reporting to the Department of Revenue. Which uses, use different lower numbers that was present, present actually in our accounting system for twenty twenty-four and this year and prior years. Uh, therefore, we need to align our budget posted to them, uh, for compliance. Um, proposed amendment includes some additions to other line items that were missed or overlooked during the twenty twenty-five budget development. Re- allocates items, uh, that have been consolidated such as liability insurance, workforce compensation, et cetera. Staff is re- recommending. The budget amendment with a total reduction of sixty-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars and ninety-seven cents, which is slightly more than required. Um, these changes such as creation of cliff treasure contract fee were implemented post-budget adoption. Uh, some are in areas that will not incur further spending such as elections. Um, but will need to be recurring starting in twenty twenty-six. Um, we'll have to deal with that when we start going into the budget for. Development for next year. Uh, finance committee reviewed this last Wednesday and recommended adoption. And once this is, assuming you approve, then, um. Will staff will communicate it to Department of Revenue as an amendment to what had previously reported. Um, so we recommend adoption.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adopt resolution number two zero two five dash two zero five three. Amending the twenty twenty-five general fund budget, reducing total expenditures in the amount of sixty-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. Any discussion? Please call roll.
Jean-Court?
Aye.
Laha?
Yes.
Brewster?
Aye.
House?
Yes.
Optital?
Yes.
Mills?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Motion carried. Seven C, adopt resolution number two zero two five dash two zero five four. Relating to setting stipends for Kiwanee ambulance department volunteers.
A, attached is the, uh, resolution to codify the stipends that are provided to various members of the ambulance. Well, the next one will be fire department. Uh, these are officer-related stipends traditionally been given to specific members of the department. And in other cases, they're given to members who take time to provide for billing, maintenance, training, scheduling, and so on. Uh, resolution also includes the audit of the rates that I paid for various service calls. Uh, this is a follow-up to the wage resolution adopted at the end of twenty twenty-four. These rates haven't been previously adopted by council, but have been continued over the years under informal sort of process. There's no change to what was previously done, and this is just simply codifying what they've been doing. Um, staff recommends approval.
So I would entertain a motion to adopt resolution number two zero two five dash two zero five four. Relating to setting stipends for Kiwanee ambulance department volunteers. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Is there typically a frequency that we would update these stipends?
I think that's something that could be considered. It hasn't been requested for, in, well, not since I've been here. I don't know if they've been increased at all in recent memory. Not within my term of office.
Um, just to point out, so like you asked about the increase, um. Would you guys go ahead and set your raises throughout the year? I believe these were increased then as well. Not like you're gonna make big jumps with any of them or anything like that, but if you guys recommend a two percent increase across the board. Except for the union employees, um, if you'd recommend that, then it would be my assumption that these would increase as well.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Seven D, adopt resolution number two zero two five dash two zero five five relating to setting stipends for Kiwanee fire department volunteers.
Okay, as with the last item, uh, this is also to codify stipends to provide to various members of the fire department. Uh, these are officer, again, for fire chief, assistant chief, and other specific officers like engineers. Uh, they have, uh, for duties, they have in addition to fire service call response. Also includes the hourly rates of pay for various service calls, um, and same as with the last one, staff recommends approval.
So at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt resolution number two zero two five dash two zero five five. Relating to setting stipends for Kiwanee. Fire department. And I just read the same thing. This is. It shouldn't say fire department, it says ambulance on the, on motion. So for Kiwanee fire department volunteers.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Seven E, adopt resolution number two zero two five dash two zero five six. Acknowledging review of the twenty twenty-four compliance manual, maintenance annual report, C M R. And directing the public works superintendent to submit the report to the D N R.
Okay, the annual report is attached, um, is provided by the water utility, wastewater utility to the D N R. In compliance with state statute, and with the utilities continuing certification. This is an annual certification. Josh Jacobs did most of the preparation. Our wastewater operator, Holden Midkey, then finished it off and submitted it to us. This has to be submitted by the end of the month. So we're recommending approval of the resolution, so we can go ahead and submit.
So I would entertain a motion to adopt resolution number two zero two five dash two zero five six. Acknowledging review of the twenty twenty-four compliance maintenance annual report, C M R, and direct public works superintendent to submit the report to the D N R.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven F, approve payment to Pier and Waterfront Solutions to acquire replacement docks for the marina in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred dollars.
Okay, a brief recap. Uh, city was approached by Pier and Waterfront Solutions, uh, late last year. About replacing the existing docking systems, the newer docks that were being acquired from Reef Point Marina in Racine. Presentation included the implementation of a five-year plan to gradually replace the docks one at a time, final installation completed in twenty twenty-eight. Council initially authorized purchase of the docks in December. However, further investigation determined that the docks were actually installed in Reef Point nineteen eighty-seven, meaning they were nearly as old as the current docks in Marina. In interim, council authorized creation of a marina committee, which was created with the objective of supporting the marina. As listed there, and advisory body to the council. Um, the marina committee, along with Marina and Public Works staff, visited. The pier of waterfront solution site where the proposed docks are currently stored. They reviewed the existing structures and determined that they were worth the investment to get started to replace the existing docks, largely due to the change in the flotation system provided under the docks. The system doesn't require dock substructures in the water and will float them above the water. And can be removed and stored on land during off-season, both of which would save wear and tear. Total dock cost of the dock acquisition was factored into the capital budget outline for twenty twenty-five. Additional funds were acquired during the recent sale. Of the G O promissory notes. Marina committee recommended authorizing payment of the invoice as originally submitted. And staff recommends approval.
So I entertain a motion to approve payment to Pier and Waterfront Solutions to acquire replacement docks for the marina. In the amount of two hundred thirty-nine thousand two hundred, plain of order. Are we gonna go through this document before they make that decision?
It's not on the agenda.
We can have that under discussion.
Yeah.
So, so right now I'm entertaining a motion to approve the two hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred.
I'll make that motion.
Sir, second?
Second.
Okay, uh, John, uh. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we've got two documents in front of me. One is a long one. Uh, which is in fact a history, one, you know, revenues, expenditures, the other one is just three of the Marina fund. Balance each year. I want to thank, uh, uh, Jamie and Eric for putting this all together for me. It's only been about four years, so. Okay, we thank you for that, so, not you. But anyway, um, I think you have to know that there's been some, there's been some discussion on social media. Uh, about the Kiwanee Marina. Uh, just a little bit of history, as far back as I can remember, the city of Kiwanee has always owned that. Uh, typically, the city started running that, the, the exact year I don't remember. Um, but it went through various changes, including leasing the marina. Uh, there's been a number of people who leased those. The last one was the Climates. Uh, at that time, uh, when Mayor Boenweiter was on the city council, the. Uh, the marina was always a general fund expenditure. Um, the city really never made any money on the marina, uh, for quite a few years. Uh, until the, until the city finally took over the marina. And then the excess revenue would put, would have been put into a fund, not necessarily enterprise fund, but a special revenue fund. If you look at this document right here, small one. Uh, you'll be able to tell what those, what the fund balances were through all the years from twenty fourteen. Um, through, uh, uh, twenty twenty-four. And as you can see, when we started to take it over, uh, the marina was making a pretty good sum of money. They were making a lot of money. As a matter of fact, at the end of twenty sixteen was the highest year we had, we had nearly a half a million dollars in that fund. Four hundred seventy-eight thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars. The city built up that marina for a few reasons. Number one reason was we knew that at some point in time, we were going to have to dredge that harbor. There was no question about it. It was just a matter of whether. We also knew that the docks are gonna have to be replaced. Uh, the docks that are currently in the harbor now, uh, were built by Allen Dock. They were put in by Allen Dock. Allen Dock leased the city for, to the marina, leased the marina to the city. So those docks are approximately about as old as the docks that we are considering buying right now. Um, they are not exactly, as a matter of fact, they're not anywhere near the type of dock that we have in the marina now. I don't know, we can't bring those photos up, can we? This, this is more like a, a box style float, a frame style float, uh, a frame style. Uh, uh, structure to hold a float. Ours are not like that. Ours are wood. I believe on each side, they're hollow, they're, um, there was galvanized tin put in there. They were then filled with styrofoam to keep them afloat. Well, most of the styrofoam in those docks are pretty much gone now. There's just hardly any in there. As a matter of fact, sometimes you'll see that, uh, that there's, that there's, uh, styrofoam floating, uh, floating in the harbor. Uh, but nonetheless, the reason we built that dock, uh, built that, that fund up. Was that we knew all these things were gonna have to be done. The council at that time, we felt if we needed to take out any type of a loan. To either replace the docks and dredge, or dredge, or just replace the docks. We built that fund up. We built that fund up. So that at some point in time, if we had to take out a revenue bond, not a general obligation bond, a revenue bond. To either dredge or replace the docks or both. We would have type of a savings account or fund built up for quite a few years. Um, if you take this document right here, it's a long one. You look at that, this is a twelve-year history of the marina, expenses we've taken in, revenue we've taken in. Um, as you can see, which will coincide, as you can see. Uh, if you take into consideration year two thousand nineteen, the revenue there at two hundred and fifty nine thousand. That's a little bit deceiving, similar to what Justin Holton was talking about, uh, for insurance claims. Uh, there was like a boardwalk in back of the, in back of the fish house there, which got damaged, I believe, when the water got high. The city got a, uh, a payment from the insurance company for forty nine thousand, one hundred and fifty one dollars and change. They put that in the marina fund. Which in turn made the marina revenue a little bit deceptive. You basically have to take almost fifty thousand dollars off of there. And then you would have a truer picture of the revenue. Now, if you take that rep, if you take that, that, that revenue, and stick that into an expense in the marina, they'll both offset each other. Which is what Justin was talking about here, which would give you a little bit more accurate picture, same in twenty twenty one. At hundred and twenty, twenty two thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollar, uh, insurance claim. They also put that in the marina. That adjusted the revenue there. Um, some of that was put back in, um, if you look under, uh, marina maintenance and equipment and, and. If I make a mistake, I'll hear, or Nathan, just let me know, so. Anyway, that was put in there, how much of that was spent in twenty twenty one, that I don't know. Um, I don't believe all of it was spent, person would have to go through every single invoice, I guess. Um, so then you're gonna go to twenty two, twenty three, twenty four. There's three basic, people are wondering, where did all the money go? And the marina can be successful, the marina. The marina had basically three big expenses throughout its, throughout its life. In two thousands, December of two thousand seventeen. Well, let's go back further. The city, the, the city got a four point two million dollar grant to put the seawall in. Here's where the, here's where the, uh, engineers at the time. Um, so they basically had about four point two million dollars to play with. What they did was they came in with a bid, I believe, of about four point six million, which included. The step down into the harbor. That you see now, which is where they like, where they're supposed to be launching the kayaks. Um, that and the. When the marina was not supposed to have that step down into the harbor because of the added cost to it. Uh, when I was defeated in two thousand sixteen, what happened was in December of two thousand seventeen. The city took a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars out of the marina fund, and eighty three thousand dollars out of the lighthouse fund. To fund that additional cost to put that step down into the harbor. So that's where a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars went from that, from the marina. Also, if you look at, in twenty twenty and twenty twenty. The city closed the marina that year, sent out letters to everyone, including campers. We're closing the marina basically because of high water. That year, the city lost a hundred and thirty five thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and forty eight cents that year. So if you add those two together, you get quite a picture of maybe where the marina fund should be at this time. Also, somewhere around two thousand nineteen, the city went to full-time staff. When we were there, we always had part-time staff. Um, Charlie Peterson ran the marina when he was public works director, then Matt Murphy. Brandon Marina, when he was work, when he was public works director. Matt Murphy moved to Algoa, they went to full-time staff. Now, if you look on the, uh, the bottom half of the second page, you'll see the green highlights. With those green high, what that green highlighted. Is staff and related costs that are charged to the marina. If you look way to the right, you'll see employee wage and benefits. In twenty twelve. Employee wage and benefits were seventy three thousand, seven hundred and fifty four dollars, which was roughly about twenty six percent of our revenue. Now in twenty twenty four, we're at a hundred and forty five thousand. Five hundred and five dollars, which is over fifty percent of our revenue. So basically, what's happening at this point. Is staffing costs, uh, you know, employee costs are what's driving this. At fifty four percent of your, of your revenue, it's gonna be awful difficult. For this marina to make money. I believe it can make money if we stick our money into the docks. And into dredging. Um, right now, there's quite a few docks we can't even rent because the water's too low, so eventually we're gonna have to dredge at some point in time. But that's kind of a picture of where everything, um, has gone for about the last twelve years. Uh, but certainly, none of this with payroll is Augie's fault, Augie's, this is a, this is a question of, of not a person, this is a question of a position. So we have to do something to gain that revenue, and we need, we either have to raise dock prices, or we have to have. More people who are slip holders. Sooner or later, that marina is gonna have to be replaced. The docks are gonna have to go, if not this year, next year. Currently, uh, the, uh, marina committee would like to see these docks replaced, probably in the year twenty twenty seven. This would give us about a year and a half, couple of years to get our ducks in a roll. Um, get our revenue situation all, all sorted out, where we're gonna get the money from. If it does go have to, to go on the general fund on, on your taxes for a while, how much is it gonna mean on your, he's working on that at some point in time. To find out how much it's gonna cost, but right now, we do not know, we do not know that. But one thing is for sure, I think we have to purchase these stocks. It's either that or at some point in time, every year, you're gonna have two or three slips, you can't rent, silk's gonna get in there. It has to be dredged, and I believe the city has to have that marina, that's my opinion. Uh, I would go ahead, I don't know, Jeff, did I miss anything?
I think you pretty well covered, John, um, and when we're looking at the wages and benefits, as some may or may not know, those benefits are spread. For all staff in city hall as well, so there's a percentage of staff that's included in that dollar amount, that's not like just. Augie and the part-time people down there, and anytime that public works goes down there to do any type of service and support. Uh, they're appropriately charging the marina fund for the hours and equipment that, that go down there to do that, and that's historically always been done. And when it was leased, we were going down there all the time fixing things with our city crew, and. It added up to a lot of money back then, and, you know, it's what it is, so.
It was also until two thousand twenty, the insurance company wasn't giving us money back either. Or dock damage as well as either, so that was coming under a fling too.
I think a good portion of the public does not know. Um, if you read some of the comments on social media, uh, you swear that this marina's been losing money for the last two hundred years, it's absolutely not true. This marina made money when we were there, and that's a fact, and these facts and figures show it.
There's definitely, there's definitely an opportunity, we're, we're not getting out of the marina business here, so we have to. Take charge here, we've got a marina committee, they're gonna be doing some work, figuring out some things on the docks, which they've already done, they brought this recommendation for the docks to this council. And that's the first step in going forward and having a plan, and I think the two-year plan and talking with, uh, uh, pier and waterfront solutions. There, I, I'm not gonna repound everything that we're all aware of, you know, the new decking boards, the new floats will be gone through, we're gonna do the. The hydraulically installed spuds and that sort of thing, and then we're gonna have the process of going through. Uh, the bidding process for the electrical and the plumbing, et cetera. It's definitely the direction we have to go.
Yeah, if we, if we decide to buy the docks, we've made the commitment. So we're gonna, at some point in time, we're gonna have to go through, or we're gonna have docks sitting there with. Either try to resell or something, but if we're, right now, the issue at hand here, that's why we went to the two-year plan. But the issue at, right, at hand right now is, if we purchase the docks, we're basically committed.
And we've got a percentage of docks that Augie can't rent, I mean, he's, can't rent them, you can't.
We've lost.
You're not gonna get revenue if you, if you're not selling.
We've lost a few docks to Salmon Harbor. Um, I did, I did approach one, I did approach Salmon Harbor at one time, not that long ago, they were not interested in purchasing that marina. They're just not interested.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just comment, um. I also agree that we need to purchase the docks, um, at this point, we've established that. You know, they are sound to the point that we could build, um. I do think that we've got work to do to evaluate the business of the marina going forward. And whether or not the long, what the long-term financial picture looks like that. And if that is to be prioritized over, you know, potential street repairs or other things that people wanna see. We've got a water plant that, you know, seems to be of an age, we have to start thinking about replacing that. Um, so I just think that, that all those things need to be considered together. I think once we kinda nail down. What this picture looks like for the marina, and at what point it will break even, or at least at what point. We're gonna have support to make the marina a city business. Then we can make the decision to go ahead and move forward with, you know, starting to replace or repair those docks. Or we still have the option to sell them, you know, and, and, you know, and I, I, that's not. Has not left my mind that by purchasing them at this point. Does not preclude us and does not, I don't think, it actually does commit us. To having to go through and actually put them all under the water at some point. But we have the infrastructure available to build on.
At some point in time, the figures we'd like to get together are, okay, let's say we're gonna do the entire marina at one time. All the docks, all the fingers, it's a turnkey operation. Um. Takes one summer to do it, I don't know what they do, but they get it all in and get it on, what's that gonna cost? I don't know. We have some rough figures that we'll probably have here at the next, um, marina committee meeting, but. Um, I'm not even gonna throw, I, I'm not gonna throw figures out there, because I don't like to do that, and sure as hell, somebody's gonna say on social media, blah, I said this, well. So I'm not gonna get myself in that position, but it's gonna be a considerable amount of money, that I can tell you.
And just to answer, uh, Scott, I agree, I'm not looking at prioritizing this over streets or anything like that. Um, we're looking at doing things simultaneously, we're, we're not gonna neglect something else, just to put this on the front burner. Um, but to sell the marina, and that's not a conversation we had today. Uh, I don't know of a community along Lakeshore that doesn't own a marina, municipal marina, I, I can't think of one. Um, if there is one, it's the rarity, um, not the majority, I, I think, uh. You know, that's fine, we've, we've subsidized that marina for decades, and as your chart shows you, the opportunity. To generate money. To break even or make money ahead like was, it's, it's, the document's right before you, it's there, it's possible, so, Nathan, you had something?
I was wondering about girls at the council as well, I had a conversation with Pier and Waterfront Solutions, it's new docks, when they're going through rehabbing, I'm putting new boards decking. Going through the joints, we're gonna engineer the utilities, the electrical and the water. These have the potential to come out every winter, and for, I'm not gonna mention numbers, cause it was just off the hip numbers from Dave, but. Numbers that would make it a lot more easy to balance a budget. Um, if you remove the ice heater, electrical consumption. Along the time that, you know, Augie and staff are out there trying to secure these docks that are breaking, um, and just turn things around, it could actually be all in dry land for. Relatively affordable price, so.
And that gives us the opportunity to clean, inspect, and do whatever maintenance on grant, on ground in the off-season.
What was the chance of this, it also helped, like I just mentioned, drive a balanced work, green budget, and keep our docks for a longer period of time in better shape. If that all comes through that way, we'll see if we can cut this down to that.
The reason our, the main reason a lot of those docks are, are failing is not because of the water itself, it's because of the ice. Uh, the ice is what pushes them up, these are floats, these are floater, they have individual floats, ours are not like that. Uh, not that that would make a difference, but they would take these docks, as we talked, we were there, they would take these docks. Out of the water, that way if there's repairs that need to be done, you know, we can do that as we see it, but. At some point in time, they're gonna, the dock should come out of the water. Hopefully, in the next couple of months, we'll have all that information for you or so, I don't like to say two or three months, but there's a lot of stuff to do, so.
Does the, uh. Marina committee have a long-term vision? Um, what I'm trying to say is, is that. I keep hearing that this marina can make money. What's the purpose for further money?
What's that?
What's the purpose for the money?
Uh, to maintain itself, so it doesn't have to be the general fund.
To be self-sufficient, that's the purpose of it.
I'm also hearing. Yeah, I'm hearing that it makes enough money to maintain itself, but is there gonna be more than that?
Well, I guess you can.
Cause you can only fix it so many times, and, and. Then it's.
What we spent, this year, we spent what, forty thousand dollars, close? Close to forty thousand dollars just to fix it. You wanna spend that every year, or would you rather stick it into docks? Personally, I think the two hundred and thirty thousand dollars they took out of those funds would have been better spent sticking it into the docks. Fix up ten or twelve docks, you're at two thousand dollars apiece, you got a twenty thousand dollar return on your investment.
Yeah, my opinion is definitely do it right the first time.
Correct, I agree, Joe.
But to answer your question, the marina committee, they only met once, and they're, they're just beginning that process to get that vision and get direction, they're in the fact gathering, I think it was a very good first meeting. And, um, they, they will be creating that, they've, they've got a lot of. Investigating to see who to find out where we are and. And that, that gets me, you know, I, I, I am in favor of. Upgrading these docks so that we're not spending a ton of money, stupid repairs every year.
Right, correct.
I mean, we're throwing good money after bad every year on those docks. Do we envision a point where we're actually making more money at that marina than what it's gonna cost to maintain it? And if so, what are we gonna do with those funds?
Well, I think those funds back when we built up that, uh, marina fund. Is that is for the future things, because we know that the docks, even though we're gonna be putting them in, we're hoping for a long life on them. Uh, there's always gonna be dredging. Um, there's always gonna be, you know, we've got other things that we haven't even touched on yet, parking lots, raising the parking lots. Um, so, again, that would be, that would be a vision. That the marina committee should develop and, uh, bring forward to the council. So, I, I think if we get in that position, it'd be a happy day, but, um.
It's playing, there's plenty to spend the money on.
Yeah, there, there won't be any shortage of, uh, needed upgrades or repairs as we go forward, so.
One more question, um, regarding the amount due on receipt. The invoice says that balances over thirty days will accrue one point five.
He's waving that.
He's waving it, yes.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, hearing none, please call the rule for the approval of the two hundred and thirty nine thousand, two hundred dollars to pier and waterfront solutions to acquire replacement docks for the marina.
Kingler?
Aye.
Bah?
Yes.
Booster?
Aight.
House?
Yes.
Officer?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you all. Seven G, approve acquisition of Town Cloud Agenda Management System with a three-year subscription for two thousand, two hundred and ninety five dollars per year.
Uh, staff are recommending acquisition of an agenda management system using Town Cloud, provide integrated unified agenda creation and minutes writing capability. For the attention information, the system enables the creation of a unified agenda package. And that creates a structure with, using templates to prepare meeting minutes without having to spend too much time on the writing process. Total cost of the system for a three-year subscription is twenty two ninety five per year. While the cost is within purchasing policy parameters, it's considered professional service, and therefore requires council authorization. Staff recommends approval.
All right, so I entertain a motion to approve the acquisition of the Town Cloud Agenda Management System with a three-year subscription for two thousand, two ninety five per year.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say that.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Um, where are we coming up with the two thousand, two hundred and ninety five, I looked at this. Uh, proposal. Yeah, there's. It's an agenda-based system, one year is six hundred dollars. And. An additional, an agenda additional admin is three hundred dollars. Multiply those both by three, and that's where, that's where you get the, the number of two thousand, two hundred and.
I think that's three licenses, if I'm correct, isn't?
Jamie or Aaron?
Yeah.
It's a two thousand, two hundred ninety-five cost for three years.
Yeah, 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 just keep saying it's for one year, one, and that's like, I don't see that for one year. That's, that's a three-year.
Alright, understood.
So it should be, I'm thinking.
Four, three years. Two thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars is a three-year subscription complete.
And then it goes to nine hundred per year, is that correct?
Yeah, they just re-up you at that point, uh, for another one, two, three years, that way you get the heads on it.
Right. So it's not two thousand, two hundred ninety-five per year?
No.
Which so, which is the way our proposal is written. We, we need a clarification on the motion.
So it's two thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars total.
For three years. Oh, for three years.
So it's, cut out the per-year part and everything else is the same.
Jim, will you amend your motion? Your second? Okay, any further discussion? I still have more questions.
Go ahead.
How many admins do we actually need?
Probably two. We had them funded exactly like Algoma, um, but so that's how they ran the book. We said, hey, we're not sure if we're gonna need one, two or three, and they said, we'll give you three. If you guys come together and you decide you only want two, we'll drop the price down.
Yeah, goodbye with one?
I would recommend no. Um, it, it goes off of username, user security. So I would say that you want to have a separate one because there's always a log of who was in there, who did what, who added, deleted. So no, I would, I would not recommend doing this one.
Cause I'm, I'm saying it that. The reason to have two is because somebody goes on vacation, so you gotta have the second person covered. So you're gonna pay an entire admin price for somebody's vacation.
Uh, I would say like by us, when we do agendas, um, if Jamie is in charge of the joint finance, Jamie does joint finance. If I do finance and personnel, um, I'm doing that agenda. I mean, we really keg-team the whole agenda process.
So this doesn't leave one person in charge of having to do all that.
Correct. If it's an election year and I. Over by I have all this election stuff, you know what, Jamie, can you take on agendas for the next three months? Yep, not a problem. It gives you the capability to be able to do that.
Yeah. Anything else?
To be clear, so we're, we basically have two administrators for three years, is that correct? It has the base system. And then an additional administrator. Per year, so I've seen the quantity of three is three years, not three people.
You get three, you get three. One of the, you just gotta have more than one.
Right.
The, the base comes with one.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying for the proposal, what I'm seeing here. I'm seeing the quantities that are three, don't represent people. Number of licenses, they represent years. So to answer the question, I think we're talking two people will have two accounts for three years.
Correct.
And I'm guessing you two would be the two people with the two accounts.
I was thinking we would share an account in until he's just ready, you know, he's.
Who were that?
Alright, okay. Any other discussion or question?
So what's, what's the story?
It's two thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars for a three-year subscription total. So it's gonna be actually not per year, it's gonna be every three years, yes. Twenty-five cents. Pretty good on that? Alright, no other discussion, uh, we're entertain, or we have a motion and a second for the three-year subscription for two thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars, uh, please call roll.
Aye.
Brew?
Aye.
Hux?
Aye.
Optital?
Aye.
No?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Motion carried. Seven H, approve revised city administration office restructuring and revised job descriptions for clerk treasurer and deputy clerk treasurer.
With the resignation of the utility clerk. Administrative assistant, the end of May staffing front office has been reduced to part-time assistants from the city of Algoma under the existing services agreement approved in March. Coordination with Algoma staff, we are recommending following changes, um. And you can avoid the first bullet because we'll be changing that later in the agenda and then restructuring the current sta- signed staffing. Uh, currently we have two and a half people assigned to the front office. We're gonna propose the staffing of clerk treasurer and deputy clerk treasurer. Staff in the office was. Previously clerk treasurer and deputy clerk and then was transitioned to the. What has up till now been the current model. Current structure creates a workload imbalance. More or less requires an additional staff presence in the form of a part-time administrative assistant. Our structure creates a more symmetrical office structure that should mitigate against the need for a third person in the front office and create some more predictable. Reporting structure for the office and for others working with the office, including department heads. In order to implement this reorganization, staff has requested a couple of actions, approval of revised job descriptions for clerk treasurer and deputy clerk treasurer, which are attached to this item. And then posting of the two positions which will be the next. Uh, note the memorandum for the administrative assistant posting in February, staff stated that that position was a bit of a catch-all, which really captures the problems of the existing structure. Our staffing created a systematic or systemic limitations to the ability to provide effective clerk treasurer support, which is fine if you want support staff. To complete projects on the edges of the office's duties, but doesn't work well if there's no clerk treasurer. Which has been ongoing, it has been an ongoing problem since August. City is too limited in support capacity to be able to hire more administrative support when what we need are officer-type positions and authority. With support staff capable of stepping in to take over those officer duties as needed or as a potential succession process. That hasn't occurred in the administration office in years. Personnel committee reviewed the draft position descriptions last week and recommended approval. We are budgeted to cover this amount, uh, for the two positions versus the two and a half. Staff recommends approval.
So I entertain a motion to approve the revised position descriptions for the clerk treasurer and deputy clerk treasurer.
I'll make that.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Seven I, approve posting for clerk treasurer and deputy clerk treasurer positions.
Okay, continuing on, their proposed positions will be implemented as full-time positions with the, within the city's administration office. Such they are designed to provide nearer support for the potential incumbents. Lack of existing staff to fill either position, we are looking to advertise two positions as something like a package. We propose to post both positions as follows, locally via this city website, posting for social media. Online using the following locations, League of Wisconsin Municipalities, Wisconsin Municipal Clerks Association, Wisconsin City Management Association. And Municipal Treasurers Association of Wisconsin and others as available. Consider placing a job ad in the local newspaper if needed. We aim to secure applicants with qualifications that match the accurate position rather than trying to hire. Uh, someone to train for the position and hope we get lucky, which obviously didn't work out last time. Algoma staff have indicated they, we would have, should have an easier time getting qualified applicants this time around because the elections are over for the calendar year and we aren't posting in the middle of a federal election by turnout. The keys will be as follows, staff recommends posting positions to the continual deadline structure or a first review type structure so that we get interested applicants to apply earlier than, with the deadline. Staff recommends posting without a salary listed, posting with a depending on qualifications. And emphasizing the benefit structure will leave the city with more room than the prior posting when council and staff felt that the posted floor for the position should be honored. And the staff recommends posting the clerk treasurer as a salary position with the deputy. At a wage-based position and thus eligible for overtime. Last time around, we hired the clerk treasurer at a salary of sixty-five thousand, which was the low end of a range up to seventy-five thousand. The adopted twenty-twenty-five budget authorized funding for the three former positions up to two hundred thirty thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars, eighty-one cents. Which includes wages, salaries, retirement, uh, social security, Medicare and health insurance. Assuming every employee on, on the family plan. Twenty-twenty-four budget for the positions was up to two hundred forty thousand, six thirty-three forty. For the purpose of funding two positions, there is a pool of wage or salary funding of either one hundred fifty, two thousand, three seventy-eight, ninety-seven or up to one hundred sixty-one, two ninety-one, thirty-four. Uh, this is a more comprehensive method to acquire staff talent. Staff is looking at how candidates municipal experience can step in and implement the systems as required by state statute. And in consideration of the requirements to keep the city in compliance with those mandates and keep our accounting systems in order with an eye toward presenting more comprehensible analysis and support going forward. Finance personnel committees reviewed these, reviewed this objective and recommend approval. I should note that the attached job ads were done after the meeting, um, was indicated that we would do this kind of thing and the language has been. Uh, written and vetted uh, by staff uh, to go forward. If you have any questions about what we have posted or any recommended changes or requested changes, feel free to let us know, otherwise we recommend authorizing posting for the positions. Oh, and also, um. We're also, it was also discussed at the meetings last week that it was indicated that. The key is that we need to be able to walk away if we don't have the right candidate. We don't need to have to hire somebody just to hire somebody.
Correct.
We don't need a butt in a seat if they're not the right butt for the seat. To put it bluntly.
Plagiarize that from somebody else, but that's okay. I entertain a motion to authorize staff to post the positions of clerk treasurer and deputy clerk treasurer in a manner as recommended. Motion?
A second.
Motion a second and discussion. Joe? My personal opinion. We have minimum qualifications of a high school diploma or GD equivalent. Prefer a bachelor's degree. I would change that to associate's degree, minimum. We're paying a pretty penny. We should get somebody educated. I mean, I hope we have somebody with a bachelor's degree in finance or something similar.
But there isn't anything, Joe, on the, uh. Uh, there's no, uh. Uh, there's no cap on it, so it's just gonna be published.
I got, no.
Also, I mean, if somebody would come in. But I mean, somebody would, somebody could come in with associate degree like you want and they interview them, that would be taken into consideration. Over, let's say, a bachelor's degree. So you'd have to pay more, but I'm just saying that, well, you know, there's no.
What I'm saying is should we not list a, at, at least associates as a minimum?
That makes me right off the top.
Yeah.
I think we have to also consider if they've been in this position at another city for a period of time and someone will not have. Had the formal education but has the on the job.
I understand your point, Joe, and I.
I do believe that that would give them preferential treatment. But not.
But you may, you may lose good candidate pool. Because of, because of that, their experience will trump that certi- certification, so. Right. Another question too is it's. The uh, completing the certification. Says within four years, it takes that long? Wow, okay. I do.
That's a good question. One track, one track of either clerk or treasurer is three years and then if you do the other track. And, uh, the other one, then you add a fourth year.
Okay, that was, I was curious.
Training for the former was going to begin this summer. Through the, the schools, it, it wasn't available prior to it. It's that block of time as well, the education is there, so, um. Go ahead.
And, and on that same note. The. Word in here says they must be willing. I take that word out, willing and make it mandatory? Well, I mean, willing means, yeah, I, I'll do it. I'm not saying when or whatever, but. I'm willing, but. Jamie? Yes. I'm, I'm, I'm just being semantic. Yes.
Will, willing to get certification?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a difference between completing the courses and getting the certification. You can complete the courses in four years, no problem. Some people may have a harder time getting the certification, um, in that amount of time because like. I could take classes at Illinois immediately, uh, because I have a bachelor's, bachelor's degree to go with it and I got so many points automatically from that. Another employee may need to. Take all the classes and then work for three, four years more to get the required experience and education points in order to apply for certification.
Good.
Well, um. Whether you. Have it or not.
I'm just trying to get the wording precise.
Anybody that's in this field is aware of.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, uh, any other questions or discussion? Alright then, all those in favor of approved posting of the clerk treasurer and deputy clerk treasurer positions signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Seven J, request to close Ellis Street east of Lake Street from July first through the fifth for a tent and carnival.
Do you want to take this one?
They're proposing for the longer closures, they're gonna place a tent in the roadway, which they would not be able to. Place any later than the first or the second, wouldn't be able to pick up any earlier than like the fifth. Um, after the public property meeting, there was a meeting between myself, Danny from the chamber and Vicky. We found in that fountain middle ground where we were able to find a place to put the tent on the tree lawn by the. Steak rack building, as we call it, essentially the extension of the water plant. It'll fit between the side lock and the building, not cover up any valves, keep our water, our vault water sales open. And we go back to the normal requirement of the road being closed from the furthest east drive where it affects property and what with the third alive. So essentially it goes back to being what it is, we're just placing a tent on city property. So you're more or less approving that usual road closure along with. Them placing the tent on city property, which staff and myself don't see any issue.
What's that?
You're good with it, right?
I did. Was what approved?
For third, nothing.
So is the third already approved? That we were just approving to extend it, or is this the first time for this year?
The only thing, the, all they're extending is just that the, the tent, I think the company is, they need to set it up ahead of the event. It's not extending the event.
I don't, no, not anymore. It's just the third will be involved here. So now we just need to have a formal, we will close the street to the third festivities, the tent will be on the tree lawn. We won't be in, in the way of anything, the property can pick it up, set it up, that would be good.
So then this, this motion will be to close the street for July third?
July, yes.
So we have a motion to close Ellis Street east of Lake Street for July third for a tent carnival, is there a second? Joe? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Seven K, request to close Ellis Street from Milwaukee Street to Main Street for the vintage snowmobile and car show on July twelfth from eight AM to four PM.
Uh, this is a repeat event, uh, over the years. This one's scheduled for Saturday, July twelfth, twenty-five. It's just Ellis Street, yeah?
Ellis portion of Main each way, all the way down to the cul-de-sac, it's the usual footprint. But we make sure the post office can get it out of their side. These ones just. Right around the Carstens bar, the, the Bain parking lot area. They don't want, has any questions, I can show them the map, but it's in the exact same footprint, it's been asked for the last, what, four years, that's been going, five years? Been going for a while.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion.
I'll pick.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carried. J L, request to close Juno Street from Rose Street to just south of Center Street for the public library-sponsored street fair. On July twenty-third from three thirty PM to six thirty PM.
Yeah, this is a portion of Juno Street that they're gonna have a street. Uh, fair sorts for, for children and adults. Uh, just for three hours on Wednesday, July twenty-third. It's gonna be roughly the southern end of the parking area on the. West side of the street and then going south to Rose Street, so essentially just gonna barricade off that section, basically. Continuous with the library building. And then that's where they're gonna have their activities and then six thirty, it'll all be over.
I'll move to.
I'll second.
So why, do you want to sign the second?
What? I, I heard Joe, second, first, second. Correct?
Doesn't matter.
That's all I heard, sorry. You can find one on the next one. Give me that and I can do that. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? She carried. Seven M, approve an addendum to the clerk treasurer's services agreement with the city of Algoma.
Uh, the Algoma, the, uh, uh, addendum is attached because we don't have any more staff essentially, um. Algoma staff are going to be pitching in to provide additional assistance with a more regular office presence, assistant cover. Including utility filling, uh, so that's a couple of the major issues to add to this. With this addendum, it's gonna increase the cost monthly up to sixty-five hundred dollars per month for the remainder of twenty-twenty-five and then increase up to their. Exactly number rate, which is all also included in the addendum. Uh, circumstances, we need to be able to write consistent service. We'll also talk about hours of operation that should be coming up on the next item, I think. Um, staff recommends approval.
So entertain a motion to approve an addendum to the clerk treasurer's services agreement with the city of Algoma to increase compensation along with expanded services.
It's not increasing it up from five thousand, eight hundred thirty-three per month to sixty-five hundred? Yes, in addition.
It's in addition to. That amount is in addition, yes.
Yeah, no, not, not.
Sorry, John. Is everybody clear on that? That's an additional amount?
By chief.
That's, that's, that's not worth it to deal. Uh, I'll make a motion, we approve. Even to not deal.
Even the not deal.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll say, I'll say the.
Jeff? Any further discussion, uh, Joe Mills and Jeff Conley, second. Okay.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Please call a roll.
Jean Court?
Aye.
Blah, yes. Brewster?
Aye.
House? Opted off?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Motion carried. Keep that clarification, sadly. Seven N, authorize change of city hall hours open to the public.
Uh, following up on the last item, which I butchered, uh, the lack of city-based staff on the administration office, city is. Position maintaining the just set hours of, we just set these hours, seven-thirty, four-thirty, Monday to Thursday, and Friday, seven-thirty to noon. But trying to figure out how to keep the lights on when contracted staff are not available for office coverage comes with a routine challenge. Um. As noted in the previous, uh, committee meeting last week, emphasis should be on quality hours of service rather than quantity. Keeping the door open, but only taking message and relaying requests via email is not particularly helpful for residents, others actually seeking actual assistance. So to that end, staff is proposing following changes, the hours open to the public. Uh, at Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, nine to three, Thursday, eight to four, and then close Friday. Um, this would be altered gradually as the administration office regains staffing, uh, we're not intending this to be a permanent, per se, solution. Um, but as we figure out how to get staff in here on, on, on a paying basis, then we'll start to look at. Changing the hours back to something close to what we were doing. Um, staff recommends approval.
And I believe these numbers in conversation with staff and the traffic and evaluation of all of that, that these hours will continue to serve, uh, the citizens of Kiwanee. As we have in the past, so. I would entertain a motion to change city hall hours to nine AM to three PM, Monday through Wednesday, eight AM to four PM Thursday, and close on Fridays until further notice.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Scott, Joe? Jordan? Jordan?
Yeah.
Uh, any discussion?
I have a question, so we have. Twenty-six hours a week that we're open, twenty-four hours minimum, uh, staffed by Algoma staff. Uh, do we have a plan for the remaining hours?
So I think if there's any hours that, um, Algoma's not able to cover, all, these, these are gonna be scheduled ahead of time, so like next week, we're gonna know if there are any hours that would be lapsed. That would not be able to be covered by either them or Heath, or if we need to volunteer, so anytime, and volunteers being council members. If there were any of those hours needed, uh, they would coordinate that with us. So everybody's got a heads up, cause I know you had mentioned, you've got other obligations as well, and it can't be, hey, can you come in tomorrow? You know, you gotta have the, a schedule, so we'll, we'll make sure we've got schedule if there's anything that needs to be covered outside of staff. Okay, so there's a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Seven O, authorize staff to proceed with seal coating work for Second Street from Lincoln Street to Bowmeister Drive, and Scott Street from Second Street to First Street.
I probably butchered this one too, if nameless to jump in here.
Um, quick background, here's the street, the street that I've been paving down first, and then they seal portal, and then we have to put a little black granite fitting. What I'm proposing here, since the riot on Second Street isn't necessarily the worst, it's just deteriorating at the surface level. Scott gave me some estimates to do some maintenance on it, which would essentially be a double chip seal to go through, lay the hot oil down, put a three-eighths black granite chipping down, which is a bigger aggregate. Come back over the top, hot oil again, and then put the eighth inch black granite, which would identically match the surface of those over there. Um, there is gonna be some cold mix wedging that'll have to be done right before the project, I intend to have that taken out of gravel street repair, and potentially whatever's left over in my seal coat bucket. The good news is, these estimates were given to me later, or the end of twenty-twenty-four, from what I've heard from Scott's reps, oil prices went down slightly, so it should be under this, is what my. Goal would be for the actual product. And this is probably a good, hoping for a ten, fifteen-year fix, again, this is a seal coat measure, so I've been building the road, it's nearly gonna hold the surface to give it, and hopefully prevent it from deteriorating any faster. The reason I show Second Street out of the entire CC's division is that street's showing most wear and damage to comply with during the winter months. So I wanna try to preserve the road before there's no road to preserve.
So these parameters that were described in the motion are correct?
Yeah, the thirty-eight thousand five twelve sixty-seven, that, it'd be right around what the estimate was, um, of Scott Street broken in three blocks for their estimate, added one block, uh, the Second Street estimate, that's right, I'll never go.
So we don't need a rule on this?
You shouldn't, because we're, we're basing it on estimates, so we're gonna, they're gonna, he's actually gonna get somebody to do the work, and then they'll, they'll bill us for it, but this is. We wanted to get this forward, so we could get rolling on this, and this was how it was portrayed through the Works Committee.
So I would entertain a motion to authorize, oops.
One more here.
Staff to proceed with seal coating work based on estimates provided for a double chip seal maintenance project on Second Street from Lincoln Street to Bowmeister Drive, and Scott Street from Second Street to First Street. Will we authorize staff to proceed? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
If you wanna call a roll, then we can go ahead.
I'll, I'll just, I will, is there any discussion? Please call a roll.
Jean Court?
Aye.
Blah?
Yes.
Brewster?
Aye.
House?
Yes.
Opted off?
Aye.
Mills?
Right.
Conley?
Yes.
Motion carried. Seven E. Financial reports for February twenty-twenty-five. Is there a motion to accept and place on file?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
I am opposed to the payment to Mr. Davidstir for the twenty-two thousand dollars.
Noted. So we have a motion and a second. To place the financial reports for February twenty-twenty-five on file, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Announcements. Uh, this weekend happens to be a big birthday party, I'm not sure if anybody's been tracking it, but it's the two-hundred-and-fiftieth. Birthday of the United States Army, so I hope everyone will light a candle and thank a soldier, and, uh, be sure to tune in. Parade is gonna be really cool, and you might even see me there. Any other announcements? Nathan?
Maybe box was installed at the base, I'm not friends with my house, that was, uh, it was like last week, I've kind of installed it. I mean, I'd like to look at it, it's currently right by the end of the park. Here it shows.
Okay, any other announcements?
If you have any, um, uh, things that you've wanted to see in the newsletter, please get them to me, like, tomorrow.
No pressure there.
Anything else? All right, motion?
Second.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried, thank you, everyone. Covered a lot of ground today.
I don't remember seeing you. Well, I, I never liked her. You get to, are you male, so, everyone?
I don't know if I'm getting.
Yeah, I think we've.
I get so, like, yes.
Yeah, I took a lot of.
I don't know if I'm.